Okay, Mr. Venture. Yeah, there we go. Ms. Yanis. Hey, nice jersey.
Thank you. All right. So, I'm here tonight to talk about an event that is hosted at the middle school. This is actually its fifth year for sixth through eighth grade girls. My apology is none of my students, current students, could make it this evening. It's a little bit difficult for middle schoolers to get here, and it's still in the last week of the first term of fall sports. But Mesa is here to help represent Mesa participated in this event, so it would have been your sixth and seventh grade year. So this year is its fifth year. The event is called Smart Girls Rock. It is a STEAM/STEM showcase for sixth through eighth grade girls at the middle school. And I was first approached by women from 3M several years ago who had done a similar event at the high school and wanted to bring this event to the middle school to give awareness at the middle school level. So we bring in women from around the Dunn County area who are in STEM STEAM events, that stand for science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. And they showcase what they do as a career for the girls at the middle school. And the girls get to interact. The first couple of years for that it was like speed mentoring type of sessions, and then based off of the girls' feedback, open that up to an open house style, so they get to come and go, they get to work on STEM activities during the event. The pictures that the board members are receiving are just raised from the pictures from the previous years of those girls. So the reason we go about doing this activity is that still ever since the most recent statistic I defined was 2013, 70% of the STEM workforce is male, and 51% of those 71% are white males. So we try to showcase that, yes, these are women, these are careers that women can partake in, and hit them at the middle school level before they go off to high school and decide on which class they want to take or what they might do as a career. And it plays off nicely with our ACP component at the middle school, too. So, yeah, it's been growing every single year. We started off with 80 middle school girls, and last year you see it was 168 girls. So we doubled within four years. And then we're all set to go. You're more than welcome to stop by on Tuesday, October 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. for this year's event, and it'll be great. So Mesa, I'm done talking, return.
Okay. Well, when I did Smart Girls Rock back in sixth and seventh grade, it was really encouraging for me because I really enjoyed math and science, but especially when there was like challenging. I know in seventh grade there was this one lab that was supposed to be really, really hard, and the majority of the people who decided to do it because it was like an extra credit assignment were boys, and I was really almost discouraged from doing that. And by going to Smart Girls Rock, it was really cool to see all of these women in these STEM fields. And then, you know, going into high school, choosing my classes, I was really excited to take the hard math classes and science classes and engineering classes and really explore those fields because, you know, girls can do that, too. And it was really good to see that and meet all of those women who do that, and it was really fun, too. You know, they showed us, you know, what they do in their day-to-day work, and we got to see some cool science stuff, and it was really fun.
I believe I still have a picture of you making ice cream. I think I just gave a call.
It was good ice cream.
It was good. It was a good thing. So I get wonderful feedback from girls every single year. They absolutely love this. They love that it's something that's just special for them, and they don't get that one-on-one acknowledgement all the time. So definitely if you have middle school girls, encourage them. There's just a short little third permission form, just so that your parents know that you're missing some classes, class time, but definitely encourage them to attend. It is a really cool event, and it's one of those that they have zero commitment other than that one day. So for those busy girls, that is a good opportunity. Yeah.
Ms. Yanis, I see there's a really impressive list here of
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
...local businesses and community partners. I'm sure your planning is pretty well set for this year, but if people want to, if we have other businesses, contact you?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So, yeah, like Mr. Zdowski said, this is a huge event with a lot of partnerships in the Dunn County area. So if you have a science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics type of background, you know somebody, we bring in a lot from Stout, from 3M, from Anderson Windows, from Mayo. I can't, like, I'm just drawing. I mean, the list goes on and on. And if you are interested in that, please contact me. I will even take you this year if you're free, Tuesday, October 29th, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and with like a 7:30 a.m. set-up time. So thank you for that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, student representative communications. And I'm gonna get it right this time because I learned how I can remember her name. Her name is Mesa. I'm a Chicago Cubs fan, and the spring training is how the Mesa, so that's how I can remember her name. Mesa, go ahead.
Okay. Well, at the Menominee High School, to start with sports, our football team won the homecoming game versus Hudson. The girls' golf and tennis teams wrap up their very successful seasons. Volleyball had a successful senior night, and they will be sponsoring the Breast Cancer Association this Thursday with cake out night. The NHS Girls Cross Country team finished their regular season by winning the 18-team Old Eight Invite. The team finishes the regular season with a record of 137 wins and nine losses. The JV girls' team is undefeated on the season, and both teams will race in the Big Rivers Conference Championships this Saturday in Eau Claire. The girls are defending BRC champions, and the JV team is looking to win the first-ever JV-BBRC title in NHS history. And then moving on, so we just had our homecoming week on September 23rd through 28th, and it was very, very successful overall. We had a very successful parade, which is one of the high school's biggest outreaches with the community. You know, the community members and the police really liked this route that we've been doing for the past couple of years, and so we plan to continue to use the same route in the future. And we had a lot of participation this year, and we are hoping to further that next year and hopefully give even more entries. We also had very successful assemblies. So we had our skid assembly with a lot of students' involvement, and we even had a couple of community members that were very impressed with how the skid assembly went. And then the Coronation Assembly NT, which is a community event as well, was really successful as well. We had a lot of community members attend and really enjoyed that. And then we had our dance on that Saturday for all of the students to attend and have some fun. And then our junior class won the overall competition for the homecoming festivities, but overall the student participation in all of the classes was really strong this year. Then Student Council gave just, gave two or three grants this last month. So we granted $400 to the Horticulture Class, $300 to the counseling for SEL kits, and $250 to Flow Class for a needs basket. So that's a grant program that our Student Council at the high school has been working on. It just started last year, but we've been able to give quite a few grants out so far, and we will continue to do that. And then as far as clothes and activities, the French and Spanish clubs welcomed our international students with cake and a speaking activity. And then Menominee DECA has two community service activities this month. They're hosting an NDA Mirco Minute at the football game on October 18th after the first quarter, and all money raised will be donated to the Muscular District V Association. They are also hosting a trick-or-treat event where students will trick-or-treat for canned goods so that others can eat, and all non-perishable food items will be donated locally to stepping schools. And then the Dunn County Forage Dairy Judging Team won the National Forage Dairy Judging Contest at the World Dairy Expo, and team members from NHS included Abby Powers and Ben Steyer. Individually, Ben placed fourth, and Abby was 19th. In the summer of 2020, the team will travel to several countries in Europe to represent the U.S. and international level. So those are some things going on at the high school right now. That's all for my share.
All right, thank you very much, Mesa.
Good job on what I said.
Okay. Next is Community Communications. I forget several. I'm gonna read something, a statement from before. This is a time for board members to listen to your concerns and for you to express your opinion on issues. You are speaking at a public meeting, and your comments may appear in newspapers and other news media. All individuals who comment during the public time period are reminded that the information provided this evening is intended to provide information to the board so that it can fulfill its role. In that vein, all parties are reminded that all information offered be truthful and honest. False statements or stigmatizing charges may subject individual making such statements to legal repercussions, including but not limited to defamation claims. Comments identified students shall be subject to the Wisconsin People Record Law and FERC law. As such, student information that is not direct through data is designated by the board. For example, individual student behavior or progress records shall not be discussed in this forum. Comments that identify personnel are subject to the applicable personnel record statutes in Section 19.3610 Wisconsin statutes. The board may inform the speaker that his or her comments are not permitted if, in the opinion of the board, is not subject to release under the above applicable standards. Even with the above disclaimer, please note that a period of public comment is a type of designated forum for speech that generally speaking has a substantial degree of protection as an perks amendment, including a requirement of viewpoint neutrality. The board typically will not respond to questions or concerns in this proportion of the meeting. Please indicate if you would like the board president to direct members of the administration to respond to your concerns. Okay. Let's start with the ones that came in first. Noel Paulson, please come forward and state your name and the address.
You can stand right here between the two tables.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Hi. My name's Noel Paulson. I'm a community member. I also work at university. I'm a sociology professor at University of South Alabama. I've been for about 10 years. My focus as a sociologist, so my PhD is in sociology, focuses on building communities and building social society. And so today I wanted to speak to the importance of creating a safe community in our schools, especially regarding LGBTQ students. And so as I understand it, there's been some very, very serious issues with regards to voting. And the way that communities are built are really in this modern day, obviously, in our schools. And if we want our society, you know, to be our ideal space where we know that we can thrive in a way that we want all our kids to do, so, you know, it's my belief that we need to start with the schools. And my background, I guess, is focused on the environment, and some of you might have seen the work that my students have done over the years on water. And so that said, my original inspiration for sociology comes from my father, who was not into water at all. Fish, okay. But hook stuck in him. But what he's very good at is leadership and education. He was a principal in Cambridge, Minnesota for 30 years. And about 20 years ago, he developed a doctoral program at Bethel University in education. His focus was on creating a safe, respectful environment for all students. And in Cambridge, he became nationally known for developing respect treats. And I remember being so inspired about the way that he, when he walked down the halls, he'd pick up trash, even little gum wrappers. And he would find every single student in this school of 2,000 students and build them by name because he wanted to make sure all felt safe. I remember thinking that that should be where my kids grow up, too. And I'm very concerned that anybody in our schools are not feeling that level of safety. So I'd like to just note that there are models out there. Certainly, I think my father's developed some great ones, and doctoral program at Bethel University, actually two of them now, we're actually recognized. But beyond that, we have models from La Croix, and I think he became the superintendent of school down there. But certainly in St. Louis as well. Or how to, I know we have the right policies here. I know we do. We need to have the right culture to back up those policies, and I know that this school district can do it. And so I really wanted to speak today on is, I'd really like to see more concerted efforts to try to develop that culture within our schools.
Oh, Mr. Paulson.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My voice too long.
Yes, we're going a lot for instance, I'm sorry.
Wow, did I? So as it turns out, professors give the worst.
And I should have warned you at the time. I'm sorry for that.
No. And so, long story short, I am very concerned especially about students. And I am encouraged to do more to try to change.
Do you have any paperwork or any information you would like to leave with the board or get to us later? Have certain...
Okay, I will email. Thank you.
Okay. Next. Okay, moving on, Board Superintendent Communications. The board members present the communication. Penny?
Well, after the last meeting, I guess that was while ago now, I went down to the kickoff homecoming pep band rally down at Park, and it was a great turnout. It was a wonderful evening, and I hope that's something that will be considered to happen next year. And the other thing would be that the Menominee Australian WIH team is moving on the state. So they've had three events the last three weekends, and all kind of place, and so if we get 14 or 15 girls will be headed to Madison this next weekend, probably kind of...
I don't know if this is the right time to do this because we already have our agenda set, but I know that there's a diversity committee meeting that's coming up, like on the 21st. I know that Joe's gonna be there, I know that Tony's gonna be there, and this might be a good time to maybe get some ideas and some feedback on what we can do about voting and diversity. Is that a possible item that you could add to your agenda for the 21st? And that way the board could get feedback on terms of like what the experts think about what's going on in the schools that can then inform us in terms of what our best action should be.
Yeah, it's already on the agenda.
Oh, great.
It's already on the agenda.
Great to go, man.
Nice work.
Which, which agenda?
The diversity committee agenda. We received a request from one of our members to help to...
I was wondering if the school board did it also.
For next week?
Yes, it was asked to be on the next one.
The next meeting, too?
Yeah.
Discussion on the 28th.
But the specific question was to ask if they'd give feedback to the board, not that just that they have a diversity committee meeting, but that we could get feedback on that specifically, and that it can come to us.
Yes, I am planning a bullying report based on requests at the next school board meeting, and it'll include feedback from the diversity committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, I'd like to just say that I'm on the QIC committee along with Penny. We sit on that committee, and that's when teachers come and explain what's going on and some of the things that they're concerned about or whatever. And one thing I'd like to say is, we just had our first QIC meeting, and I was very impressed with the fact that teachers all said that the school year got off to a very good start, and that I had one teacher catch me out in the parking lot to tell me that this was the first year she felt like she was really heard. So I hope that that's going to be something we're gonna be hearing more about as a community. So I was very impressed by that, and to see them a little more upbeat and not so, you know, down. Of course, it's only the first part of the year, so who knows how it'll be later, but I just wanted to say that. Thank you. David?
I just remembered, tonight is Epiphany Night at Colver's, so if anybody is hungry after the board meeting, get over to Melvers and support the epiphany. Appreciate it.
Thank you, David. Anybody else? Dr. Joe?
Well, first, I would just like to say thank you to our students and community members who came and spoke today. Students, I was extremely impressed with your presentations. I think all of you did a marvelous job. If you're willing to email those comments, we'd love to add them to the record if you're comfortable with that. But please know that your comments definitely mean a lot to us, students and community members, and we are taking your comments very seriously. I did write a School Crossings column recently about bullying efforts in the school district. Many of our staff members do a terrific job, and I know all of our staff members really care deeply about our kids. I do, too. I also know that with 3,400 students in our schools, it's not easy, and there are many learning opportunities, whether we're talking about academics or social learning opportunities, and that's something that our staff does a terrific job working with our students on. But you're right, there's always room for improvement, and that's definitely something we'll be talking about and really emphasizing here as we go forward. I would like to point out that we do have many good resources available, and if you check out the School Crossings column, it's on our district website, we do have anonymous reporting, portholes available if reporting is an issue. You know, I was jotting down some of the comments, and when I hear about a situation where a teacher allowed essentially harassment to occur, that's extremely concerning to me, and I would like to see a report on that. Or some of these other concerns of students saying things or doing things that are inappropriate, those things need to be reported so that we can address those seriously. And then if you ever feel like something is reported and it's not handled appropriately, then the next step is to contact me. And if you need help with the first step, I'm willing to help with that as well. But again, thank you for coming, thank you for sharing your concerns, and please do email those comments in so we can follow up on those. Other items to report on tonight, since our last meeting, it was a real pleasure of mine to meet with members of our sister city in Nasu Krasu Yama, Japan. That's something that's happened each of the last several years, and it's always a real eye-opening experience, not only to hear what education is like in Japan, but also to see that many of the circumstances and many of the challenges that we are working on here in Menominee are very similar challenges that they are working through with their school system. They're very impressed, at least the visitors I talked with, very impressed with many of our schools and many of the activities, and they are extremely impressed with all the extra things, extracurriculars, co-curriculars, sports, finance, all those opportunities that our students get here at Menominee, and I think that's something we can really be proud of. The Woodland Sky League American Dance Presentations, they were already mentioned tonight, that was super. Not only was it very neat to see all the dances and all the wardrobe and everything like that, but I was really impressed with the description of what the dances meant, and in some cases it was a real source of pride, some of those dances, and you could really feel that. In some cases it was very sad, and I think that was a really good learning experience for our students. Two other things to mention, the staff survey, that has been completed. The window has been closed, and a representative from School Perceptions will be here on Thursday morning and will be presenting to the entire staff. There will be reports coming in the future to the board as well, but we're very happy to have that staff survey completed once again this year. And then just to remind you, there is no school this week on Thursday and Friday. Thursday is a professional development day. I appreciate Brian, the principals, and other leaders in the school district planning a great day of professional development for our staff. And then on Friday is gonna be a day off in the district. There are parent teacher conferences going on, and it's a parent teacher conference credit day, so there'll be no school on Friday.
Thank you. Joe reminded you of something, too. Yesterday I got to participate in something called Blanket Exercise, which was done by the Ho-Chunk Nation about learning about how they were oppressed and driven off their land and so forth, and it was very empowering, maybe similar to what was presented with the dance crew that came as well. And there's another one going on tonight, and obviously nobody can go tonight on the school board, but it was, I think it opened up to the community tonight, so just wanted everybody to know about that. Thank you. Okay. Leah, Revenue and Expense Report, take it away.
Okay, the first report we're gonna look at is the September Expenses by Object Report. So the General Fund 10, year-to-date for September, is slightly higher than it was at the same time last September. We're at 11.59% compared to 10.89. And then in Funds 27, our Special Education Fund, spending is down in that at this time. We're at 7.09% compared to 8.12% last year, and food service down as well. We're at 9.25% compared to 11.47%. And it's just important to know that bill timing is a factor. Each month-to-month, we can pay more bills in one month than the other, so those fluctuate a little bit based on, especially in Funds 27 and Funds 50, bill timing does come into play. And then the next report is our Expenses by Object. Would you like to open that? These are all funds combined, so our year-to-date for September, we're currently at 11.03% compared to 10.98%, so real close if we take a look at the expenses by object. Again, bill timing is a factor. There was another clarification on account codes from DPI. Some objects, software in particular, they changed from, some of them were in Supplies and Paper Object, they've been moved to Communications and Data, so you'll see those percentages go up and down, and it's based on that accounting code change there. And then the last report is our Revenue Report for September. Would you like to open that up? Our revenues this time of year are minimal, yet we're basically looking at local revenues until our state and federal revenues come in. But in our Fund 10 for September, we've received in $216,776.52. And then in our Fund 21, our donation gift account, we've received in $10,484.78. And in Fund 27, year-to-date, we have been received in our revenues for that yet from the state. Does anyone have any questions?
Move it off the subject, but food service, you'd mentioned taco a little bit, and one of the reports that they sent out, they had said they were having some issues with getting food in from vendors and timely, and all the kids had changed, said the milk had changed and some things like that. Do you see that on your end as well as far as the girls coming in?
I have not noticed that yet, no. I know there was an issue with one of the vendors, I think they changed their software package in-house, and they were having some difficulties with the new software program getting orders in and out the door.
Anybody else? Thank you, Leah. Okay, do you want to have the consent agenda? May I entertain a motion?
No, no, no. No, they have a report.
Oh, sorry, nothing for my report. Thank you. Catch you then. Okay, that's pretty much informational. Any questions? Now, may I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
David, yes, it's planned. Any questions or discussion? See, they're hearing done. Jamie? Do you see that on your end as well, as far as the bills coming in?
I have not noticed that yet, no. I know there was an issue with one of the vendors, I think they changed their software package in-house, and they were having some difficulties with the new software program getting orders in and out the door.
Anybody else? Thank you, Leah. Okay, do you want to make a consent agenda? May I entertain a motion?
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry, nothing for my report. Thank you. Okay, that's pretty much informational. Now, may I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
David, yes, plant. Any questions or discussion? See, they're hearing done. Okay, everybody says yes. Motion is carried. Thank you. Action Agenda, I do A, may I entertain a motion for the action to approve the 2020 district health insurance renewal?
Motion, second.
Any questions?
Yes. I just want to point out to the board, what you're approving tonight is a renewal of our current health insurance plan design. We are also working on another option for our staff. When we look at the Affordable Care Act and look at making sure that our plans are affordable, some school districts in our region are offering a higher deductible single plan that is available for employees. Leah has done a great job working with her consultant associate. However, there's still some details that need to be worked out. We are planning on moving forward with our benefit presentations here at the end of the month, but I wanted to let the board know it is likely that we'll be asking for an additional approval of another plan option at the next board meeting, but just not enough details to bring forward to you tonight. We do, however, fully intend to continue with our plan design options that are currently on the menu, and that's what we're asking for your approval of tonight.
David?
If that were to come forth, when do you anticipate that being?
Our entire plan needs to be set up by January 1st.
So this single plan would be available by January 1st?
That is our whole.
Chris?
I just had a question, because it came up at a what meeting we were at, that certain people should maybe stay from boarding on insur- health insurance issues. Do you remember that? Because you took money, I'm just bringing this up because it came up at what meeting that I didn't often remember, that discussion that came up there.
Yeah, it would be enough of a conflict of interest if I don't want to, yeah.
It's just maybe it turns out we remember that because it was a long night.
It doesn't allow.
Okay, any questions? Jamie? Okay, we have eight yeses, or seven yeses and one abstain. Motion carries. Thank you. May I entertain a motion for the action to approve changes in the 219, 2020 staffing plan?
So, I'll second.
As we noted in the background of board docs, we passed the third Friday count. Our enrollment, although it still continues to change almost on a daily basis, there's a lot of mobility. However, appreciate Tonya's work in completing caseload factoring and reviewing the needs of students. And because of that, it is being recommended that the board approve the addition of two paraeducators, one FTE at Wakanda, one FTE at the high school. We anticipate that that will still fit within the 2019-2020 budget that the board will be considering at the next meeting. If not, we would have to tap into the contingency fund. But based on the needs of the students, we feel this recommendation is necessary. Tony, is there anything you want to add at all?
Any questions? David?
I just have, incidental thing to add, Shannon and Leslie brought their students up to the farm last week, and just a wonderful group, toward the baby cows and everything. We just had a blast with the students, and they have fun. They're doing a great job.
Anybody else? Okay, then just into our discussion items. Oh, we have to vote first.
I hit the button, so I'll just, you don't need to vote yet until you're ready. I just hit the button.
Okay. So, are we ready to vote? Then, I believe so. Thank you. Here's where we'll kick off. David?
It's a yes to stop.
I can have it. I got it.
Okay, motion carries. And now we move into discussion items and call to review. Letter A, endorsement of Dunn County Telecommuter Forward Certification.
Last spring, Jim Anderson came in and looked at me about efforts at Dunn County in terms of telecommunication broadband access expansion. And at that time, brought forward the idea to the board, that was in May, and the board expressed interest in supporting that process whatever way was most appropriate. We've continued to work on that in talking with Jim and then Eric Turner, the executive director of the Dunn County Economic Development Corporation. It was noticed that the best way the board can be supportive right now is by issuing a letter on behalf of the district supporting broadband expansion in Dunn County. I drafted up a letter, I shared it with the board, and I'm wondering if there's any feedback or suggested changes. I did send the letter draft to Jim and Eric, and they both responded appropriately.
Chris?
I thought it was a great letter. Thank you. Do we do other, because I really liked that you had addressing equity issues publicly, and I love the fact that you lend your weight and your wordsmanship to these types of issues. Are there any other equity issues that you address during the year? This is a great letter, it really puts our district's interest first, I think. Are there any other ways in which we put out public letters, especially on equity issues for students?
Yeah, I think we do quite a bit of that, you know, in the School Crossings column. Obviously, too, with the advocacy during the state budget process, there's a lot of it to add.
Yeah, and so thinking about especially equity issues for students, I do, there's other public concerns that come out, like especially for equity issues and funding for schools in Wisconsin, since we are well behind the way in which funding operates for our students, that would be another great opportunity for us to, no use your words, to the public benefit of education. I think of other things like, other equity issues, like the way in which that funding operates for, I'll say issues for technology property. These are things that affect our district and that cost our taxpayers money, and you've got such an elephant voice, it might be worthwhile thinking of ways which we could advance that, not to other causes that are concerned, especially for equity issues.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate it.
Okay, I'd just like to say thank you for writing up that as my letter. I appreciate that, because I know that's been a huge concern, especially for our rural residents.
He's got me worried, I'm going to check this letter over. So I want to give credit, I think I got some of this, actually Katie helped with quite a bit of this. I give Peter credit.
Letter D, review early college credit requests for spring 2020.
Brian, do you want to speak to this one, please?
Sure. So, this is an annual procedural update to the board, and as required by board policy and also the state, our students have the opportunity to take post-secondary credits while currently enrolled at high school. So in front of you is the breakdown of courses that the high school has received up to this point for students to take courses at, in this case, stout in spring of 2020. So this leads a little bit, those semesters. In addition, I provided a breakdown of the number of requests by the number of students that we've had historically over the last few years. Mr. Drake and his staff have done a nice job of not only identifying how many different students, but how many requests they've made. You can see that several students request multiple courses. Students are able to take up two courses, so very frequently what will happen is they'll make a request for several courses, and then based on seat availability at the university level, then they have the opportunity to take those courses. So if there are any questions, Mr. Drake can speak to that, or I can do the historical stuff as well.
One student requests 39 courses. That's right. Without the allowed take.
So I put this in there, and we did the same thing last year, and I appreciated some correspondence from Amy. Typically, we try to take most of our action at the regular meetings, but this definitely is an exception. When you look at the timeline that was shared with the board last November, it's a long process for setting the budget. It includes, you know, the annual meeting includes preliminary budget, but it also includes getting some key information from the state. So October is really a crunch time for school districts, and as we receive more of the information from the state, then we're able to finalize the revenue limit worksheet, finalize the budget. So that's why typically budget action occurs at the end of October. There is a deadline that we have to hit in terms of giving municipalities information related to taxes, so Leah's going to be really busy. I do apologize, the original posting had October 21st, our next board meeting's not until October 28th, but that's when you can expect to see the final budget materials. Any questions? And then we'll start the cycle over again.
Action Plan for Re- 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 Re-[1383.82] And our 4K programming that's housed at River Heights. And right now, we think we're missing out on some opportunities for some collaboration and some inclusion. We're also running into some issues with our transportation. And no matter what, there's gonna be some changes next year. If nothing else, simply with transportation. But that also will have a budget impact, a timing impact. So we are taking a good, comprehensive look at this. And we'll have more to report to the board as we move forward. Brian, Tonya, anything else that you want to add today? Are there any questions that board members have with the action plan?
Tricia, I definitely have some questions here. And I'm not sure if you or Tonya would be very willing to answer. But I guess, reading over everything, I, my first thought is, don't these discussions initially start with an IEP meeting with the family to determine if they're going to approve it or not? And if they say no, then what?
Well, the placement in the IEP is in the district, not necessarily at a school building. So we would talk with those families. And yes, that was part of the timeline, that all of those families would be talked with. And if we're gonna transition, we transition kids from building to building. I would say multiple times a year that we decide that a different school building is a better place to service school students. And that is done with the collaboration with parents, yes.
So I guess, okay, so then I guess the follow-up that... I mean, it mentions there are 78 students, four of which are in the River Heights attendance area. But now it's 78, what if it's 10 to 12 this year or the year after that? It's good to hear.
We can't determine from year to year how many students are... We have other students in the building that are identified, in other buildings that are identified under the autism spectrum in other buildings. Tricia, I can tell that you're very upset. This was a discussion point that we brought up to solve issues. It wasn't a final decision.
Oh, I know.
So I, I'm gonna be honest. I've been felt attacked this last week for an idea that I had. And it was, it's my job as a director, when there's a problem, to bring forth ideas for solutions. And even in the book that we're reading, that we're reading as administrative team and you're reading as a board, there's a behavior one that talks about straight talk and about being honest and straightforward in bringing forth your ideas. And that's what I did. And now it's coming back at me. So the next time, when there's a problem and a solution, I'm going to think twice, three times, four times about my straight talk before I bring that forward because of this. And I need to be honest with that because in the last week, I've been felt very attacked. For bringing forth an idea.
First of all, I just have to say that I am upset. But honestly, I'm upset about the conversation that was had with the students who were standing in front of us. I'm still trying to process this. Plus, I just, I get nervous talking in front of people. So that's just part of who I am. This discussion, everything that I've read and everything that I'm talking about is because of what I've read. So I realize that this is an emotional topic for other people as well. But please don't think that it's because I've been out like searching for, you know, comments from other people. It's because I'm reading this and there are some questions that I have. And I am just trying to understand more about what's going on. I mean, from the surface, it just doesn't feel right to me that we would take kids, you know, with one population and put them at a school that is already, you know, identified with kids with, you know, that are from, you know, they have, what am I trying to say? Like, there's more kids that are from...
Limited income.
Yeah, limited income and different diversity backgrounds. But that's just my opinion. And so from the surface, that's what I'm, it just feels weird. But I'm asking questions because I'm trying to understand this better. And I can, and I can underst, I mean, I love the thought that, you know, you talked about trying to, you know, do more inclusion with 4K. And I, I think that's awesome. But I am concerned, like, if we do this and we uproot these kids to a different school, and then next year it's even a larger program, which I don't know if it will be or not, then what's the capacity at that school? And so I, I'm just trying to understand better. In the end, that's all I can do. I mean, I, you know, over the years, I've heard concerns about the fact that, you know, there's not as, I mean, I guess I don't want to characterize everybody, but the neighborhood school isn't how they're supposed to be paying attention to that. But I get like the districts, you know, are trying to serve the kids the best they can. It just, it really makes me unnervous thinking about kids just getting moved to different, you know, schools. But I understand your concerns as well, so.
Tricia, before you jump into your next point, can I say one thing? I think it's really important to understand that we are just in the fact finding portion of this right now. There have been no decisions. But what we do know is that our early childhood program, there's not as much inclusion with early childhood services into regular education as would be recommended or expected. So we know we need to fix that there. We also know that there are space limitations at all of our schools. So trying to maximize the use of our space is an issue. And then we also know that there are transportation issues that need to be solved one way or another. And then finally, we know that there's also an issue with 4K access in the north part of the nominee. We have some four-year-olds that are on the bus for way too long right now. So there's just, there's several issues that, and I really appreciate Tonya bringing that idea forward. I'm sure we all do. Trying to, you know, look at all these issues and see if we can do things better. But what other questions do you have, Tricia? And really, again, this is supposed to be focused on the timeline and action plan. But we can talk about each of these ideas if you would like.
No, it's, I mean, that was the biggest thing. I guess, I just wanted to say, I hope you do continue to bring up ideas. And I know it takes this risk. I try to do that as well, and sometimes I get totally shot now, and it sucks. But I just hope that you know that I truly appreciate your input and that you have this passion. Because if you didn't care, you wouldn't have said it. You would have just gone. That's all I have.
Anybody else? David?
I just, Tonya, taking a neck on the limb, I appreciate it as a board member to get input from our top-tier management group on ideas and suggestions. And don't ever be afraid to do that. I know it's hard. But I really appreciate your input and thoughts on this.
I'd just like to say, but, you know, I'm like sorry that you feel that way. Like that you were attacked. You know, I don't know if it was with staff or board members or whatever. But I feel bad because, you know, I think that you, you know, have some, you know, some good ideas. My biggest thing, you know, is, yeah, you know, I think that it was mentioned already that the DPI is concerned because we don't have students that are, we don't have the 4K that are special needs are not able to be in a mainstream classroom or do mainstream things. And I think that's important. My only concern with that, though, is to make sure that they're getting, you know, all their needs met. Not, you know, in other words, that you're not just saying, oh, this time they have to go here, this time they have to go here. You know, I mean, and I'm sure that you are gonna, and the professionals out here will know how to handle, you know, when they need to be with, you know, a record class and when they need to have to pull out or be in their special, special class. You know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it if it works for kids. That's my most important thing. You know, if it works for kids, like, that could be mine.
Anybody else? Okay, next. Action plan for developing K through 12 social emotional learning.
So the next two items are somewhat similar. You know, through our strategic plan for our goal-setting processes, we have some pretty hefty goals that we'll be working towards during the remainder of the year. And this is just a deep board form of those efforts, what the next steps are. It's also communicate with our staff and community. So I guess we'll take one at a time. First, when we look at our strategic plan, and one of our goals for this year is to develop a K-12 social emotional learning curriculum across the district. I appreciate the work that Brian has done on this. It's in line with pillar two. Are there any questions or suggestions for changes in terms of the action plan? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Thank you.
Are we, is that for both of you?
No, that was just the delivery.
Okay, and then, action plan for developing K through 12 environmental education curriculum.
And this is another thing that we've been working on. One thing that, you know, I'm gonna put my own little personal spin on this. I really have been happy to see our classes out at the environmental site. We've had a better fall until just recently in terms of getting people out there, getting those experiences. However, one thing that I'm seeing is I'm definitely seeing some gaps in the overlaps. I'm seeing some things that are pretty repetitive in our environmental ed. Whereas, you know, maybe students are doing some of the same things multiple times. And that's not all bad. But then, you know, perhaps there's some gaps where we could be offering some different experiences. I think this action plan that Brian put together with the idea of working with staff should help us develop a curriculum to help us make sure we're aligned with where we want to go and then also trying to eliminate some of those gaps and overlaps. But Jim, I know you have experience. Do you have a few ideas on this?
Well, yeah, I do. I got a couple of resources for you.
Great.
The U.S. Fish and Wildlife, I just looked at this yesterday, actually. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and their National Refuge Service has a whole slew of lesson plans for environmental education hooked up and ready to go based on national standards.
Okay.
And then in Wisconsin, being part of the Wildlife Federation Board, we are part of one of our biggest things we do is the Green School Network.
Mm-hmm.
As a network of schools that do environmental education. And they've got tremendous resources, people, all the thing, you know, stuff to do. And so that would also be a really great thing to hook up with and give us a lot of resources that we can use here.
That's awesome. I've also been tapped in. The Wausau School District has a really good environmental ed curriculum. So I know that's another area. But I don't want to speak out of term because certainly our teachers are gonna have to be really involved with this. And we want to be careful because it can be a ton of work to develop that curriculum. And that's why some of those resources are important. And we also want to make sure that they fit into what we're doing in the classroom. So, yeah, I think that those are good ideas. Anything else from the board on that?
Chris?
Yeah, I am always blown away by DPI and the information they put out under model. I'm blown away by them every time. But one thing that if you go through how they want to see a progression of increasingly complex thinking about the environment, when you get up to your nine to 12, our kids in college are at that level.
They're not.
They're not. Okay. So thinking about what you said about overlap, you actually have to have overlap. Because in order to make the connections and understand the difference between types of thinking, that has to be made evident to the students. So they understand that they're actually moving from one type of thinking, which is like basic analysis, to then reflective analysis when you get to nine to 12. And that demands that there's a degree of progress that they're intentional about. And that students have to understand. Because when you're trying to get that higher order of thinking, and this happens when they came and talked to us about the SEL learning as well, when you get to that moment where you actually are thinking through self-refletively about the object, it's no longer that this is what I'm studying, but this is my self-in relationship with the world, that's a really powerful place to be. But you gotta have a lot of overlap and a lot of reinforcement and making that evident to the children as they're moving through that. I mean, I suppose I'm assuming how old I am right now, because I'm old. But they are so young. But being aware of how their brains are changing and the different types of equations they think they're using is really important to that. So thinking about how they set this up, they were very specific about how they saw those stages. But coming to the development of nine to 12, there can't be any gaps in that environmental learning. They can't, you can't have it in like seventh grade and then skip to like 10th grade.
Right.
It has to be constant, ongoing progression of different types of picking up, hopefully, that environmental site.
Yeah, and, you know, you talked to, before we were talking about some equity pieces too. And that's, I'm also concerned about equity and consistency. And I definitely think that our teachers need to have the autonomy to do what it is they think is best for our kids, for sure. At the same time, you know, is a third grader at Wakanda getting the same experience as a third grader or the same opportunity as a third grader in Oklahoma or River Heights? And, you know, same thing all the way up. And I guess in my mind, I'd love to see some sort of, you know, curriculum put together so that even if, you know, we start at the youngest ages and some of the environmental ed pieces are onsite. I mean, all of our sites have the ability to do some environmental ed stuff onsite. And then at what point does that move to the environmental site? What grade level? And then at the environmental site, what experiences are they going to be? But I appreciate what you're saying because that's, that's pretty high, pretty high-end to think that it could be really the identical lesson, but with the age difference and the development difference, what they get out of that lesson could be a lot different. And our teachers know so much about that. That's why they need to be really involved with this process. But that blew my mind. Thank you for doing that.
That was first. Just, it's a short term, I guess, anyway. One of the things my kids enjoy the most about going to Wakanda is the outdoor classroom, actually. They look forward to using that. And I don't know if that's something that's available to every kid in the district. So you talk about consistency. I mean, of course, they don't necessarily need a classroom per se that you go sit and learn, but it was a nice addition to that particular site.
Yeah, there's still gonna be differences. You know, and we're not gonna have a cookie cutter school. But I do think if we do this the right way, there's ways to get at that curriculum. There's different ways to get at the same curriculum. And maybe I didn't state it correctly before, but that's just my concern is I want to make sure that all of the students in our school district have the opportunity to address that curriculum in some way, whether it be in an outdoor classroom, whether it be a trip to the environmental site, whether it be some other field trip to some other place, maybe it's the use of technology in some cases. But I just want to make sure that all students in the nominee are getting those opportunities.
Can I make just a quick comment? You got that, somebody at Tricia can say this, but there is a fourth grade class at Oklahoma that has never been in the environmental site.
I believe it.
Because they, it got canceled in kindergarten, and they have not been back since. So I would love to see every kid get the opportunity to be up there, so.
The only other thing that we have to think about is that, yes, we live in a rural region, the kids should be involved in the environment. Like, this is, their world is here, right? But this is not gonna improve their test scores. And I'm happy about that. But we also have to be able to articulate the idea that we're giving them a meaningful education that's not necessarily gonna show up on a metric that, you know, could be sidelined if we're pursuing, you know, the way in which the state's gonna mandate what is more important. And I see for kids in a rural region, there's nothing more important than understanding how they and their lives work in relationship, you know, to the natural landscape that's all around us. It's beautiful here.
Any comments on that, Brian?
So it's interesting. I actually have attended a few workshops over the last few summers. And they're actually, one of the things that our DPI consultants in environmental education, social studies, science, and our other, what I will refer to as encore or specialist areas have really spent a lot of time talking about is how that time in this type of learning will assist students in improving in all content areas, not just one content area. So I would say, you know, I think if we do this right, there will be a correlation to an increase in a test score at some point in time. Not that that's the only thing that we are striving to do is increase the test score. But when we talk about the aspect of being reflective, our place in our environment, our place in our world, it is all very interconnected. And I'm very reassured from the messages coming from our Department of Instruction on the importance of all of those areas and how they're connected together.
I'm super excited about this curriculum.
Just one other payoff. There's a huge amount of research out here that shows that having regular contact with nature for kids greatly improves mental health. And, yeah, there's a lot of research out there so concerned with mental health and all that stuff. You know, it's, no point in the dirt.
Is that why when you're grouchy and then you go hunting, you go back?
I'm biased.
You know, I've noticed it too with the groups that we get over to the farm. You know, you bring them all around the animals and you see the work in the farm like that. It's purely a different perspective for the kids too. So I'd be all up for more, I'd be interested in this.
If you ever want to see a multidisciplinary lesson, the Wakanda fifth grade trip to the environmental site, the overnight trip is amazing. Our teachers, I mean, there was reading, there was writing, drawing, there was talking, there was activity. I mean, you name it, it's in there.
Stand-up comedy?
There was a little stand-up comedy, yeah.
There was at the fifth grade, I don't know.
Anyway. Point well taken. Thank you.
And I would just like to say that I really appreciated the DPI curriculum. I think it was pretty awesome. You know, maybe that would be a good starting point in my opinion. Thank you. Okay, action plan for new SDMA district management contract.
Katie, don't take this the wrong way. This is not as fun as talking about environmental science curriculum. But I do appreciate Katie putting this together. As she wrote, you can see that right now we have services for our print and our copying. And she's doing a great job putting together an action plan so that we can consider melding those together. Again, that's not a decision that's been made, but Katie's got a great plan for it. Any questions or direction for me or Katie on this one?
I have one question. Do you do a lot of faxing still?
Faxing is the most secure way to share medical information. So when hospitals or healthcare providers are sending things to students, that's the most secure. Also, anything that has like social security numbers or banking information, faxing is the most secure transfer, depending on what protocols are available with encryption for other form of communication. So, but I would say our hospitals in town primarily prefer fax.
Isn't Katie awesome?
Anybody else? Quarterly update to 2019, 2020 district work plan.
So I'm not gonna take the time to read through this entire thing. I'm assuming the board members got a chance to look at it. But like these action plans that we just shared with you, we have a lot of heavy lifting that has to happen over the next year if we're gonna meet our deliverables for our strategic action, our strategic plan and the major goals and activities that we have set for this year. Are there any questions or anything that board members would like to discuss on this list so far? You will get another update in the second quarter.
Okay, distribution of school board self-assessment, instrument and schedule board briefing. First of all, do we need a board retreat? And if we do, what would be the topic?
If I could chime in real quick, Amy. First of all, I want to let you know that L. Brown is no longer available. He had talked about continuing to do some consulting after his retirement from WASB, but he is not, he is not available. What we have scheduled the last couple of years, some of them that canceled with weather, is a review of the results of the self-assessment survey. That would not have to be done in the winter. It could be done in the spring. It could be done at the board's pleasure or not done at all. That's my feedback, or my input. Okay, thank you.
Jim?
If we do have a retreat, something I think that's really important for us to do is develop, I was gonna add with, and he actually gave a really great seminar on this at the last school board convention, unfortunately. But we're supposed to be evaluating programs when we give reports as a board. And we found that out a couple of years ago. We haven't really got to create a protocols and processes for doing that. So if we do a board retreat, we really should focus on that. Something we're supposed to be doing by now.
Any more news? Chris?
I think that Dr. Paulson just mentioned that his dad would be willing to do a workshop with us that deals specifically with the Belink issue and culture problems that we have in the school district. He has retired, and his grandchildren are in the district. And he's super nice and super smart. And he's offered his services to come in and help us think critically about how we wanna think about instrumenting from a policy level, what that cultural change process might look like.
Okay, so we have a couple of things on the menu that we brought up. So my question is, do we want to schedule a retreat yet this fall? Or are you gonna wait until spring? Chris?
I would say yes.
What is the consensus? Jim? Okay. So I hear a couple of yeses.
No.
What do you think, Amy?
Whatever everybody else wants to do.
Okay. Heather, do you have a preference? David? Yes, okay. I would hopefully be finding a plan.
I'm fine with it. It's just, I need to be, when I'm gonna be in town, it's gonna be difficult.
It'll be a Monday night.
It's gonna be one of the Patrick's.
No. We'll try not, we'll try to avoid that if at all possible.
Do you want to do the self-assessment? And if we want to have a retreat around a specific topic, that's fine too. But we have this free WASB tool. You may want to consider a WASB consultant if you want to talk about the results of the tool. If you want to have a retreat more based on a subject, you know, then I think you have some ideas. But I think that would help with your decision-making.
Who tallies the results of the, uh?
That's school perceptions and then the WASB.
I took it by accident, so I already did it.
Oh, you already did it.
I was bored.
It was interesting, actually.
You have some good points because it wasn't due until the 28th.
I was just worried who tallied it because you can see that someone responded already, so.
Don't worry, I did two clips.
Oh.
So there's two.
So there's two.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then maybe we all did here, you know?
The nice thing about the assessment is that you would get some longitudinal data.
Okay, so then let's do that. And then how quick do they...Joe, how quick do they get that information to us?
It's really quick once it's done.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Can they look at past, like, look at the data and how... I know we have different boards, but just how the school perception survey has changed over the years?
Yes, they'll give us longitudinal data, yeah. But if you want to analyze in that fashion, I would suggest that we get a WASB consultant to come in and go through it.
I was sorry, Brian.
I don't think it'd be good with Brian in that situation. Circumstance.
How long do you think this board assessment piece with WASB would be? Is that something you could do in half an hour, 35 minutes? Is it possible to have two things on the agenda?
I think it'd be questionable. And seeing how it's long the last couple of times, not because of the board, but just, you know, there's enough discussion that it spurs. I would not recommend that.
My thinking is maybe we do the...everybody does the perceptions and then maybe Joe and I get together once they do the assessment[1577.31]